Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call to order the October 12, 2015 Meeting of Dover City Council. Please rise and join all of us as Captain Wallace Dixon provides an invocation followed by the pledge to our nation's flag by Councilman Hosfeld.
Shall we pray, our Father and our God, that we just thank you for this day? He's been with us all day. As we enter and work in this council meeting tonight, let your peace be with us, that we solve problems, work out other plans for our city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have before you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
President, I move for the approval of the council agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Hutchinson and second by Councilman Hare to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You now have before us the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine, non-controversial, are marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate item. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Hosfeld.
Sir, I would ask that we pull item 9B, the City Manager's Report, and item 9G, the Police Chief's Report, for discussion, please.
Other members of council? For motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
For a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Neal. Moved by Councilman Hare, seconded by Councilman Neal to accept the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Suddler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries nine zero. Item number two A is a presentation of the 2015 Mayor's Arts Award. I would invite Mayor Christensen and Mr. Tom Byrd, publisher of the Delaware State News, to the podium for the presentation. Mr. Byrd, are there other members of the Delaware State News family you'd like to have join you at the podium? You know, half the audience is from Delaware State News.
Since they've earned this, I would really like to invite all of our State News staff up here if possible. Come on up. The tall ones will get the message.
I do have a job there.
I thought you were just a volunteer. I was squeezing together, you know how this works, buddy. Mr. Byrd, it's an honor and a pleasure to present this to you and your staff for all the contributions you make to the city of Dover. And this is a beautiful trophy.
Let me take one of you in.
You've got to be in here.
Okay, what does that mean?
Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry. Step in here.
Am I blocking anyone?
You need to squat down and get a ball cap on.
We're not supposed to like this.
So would you like to say?
Thank you, everyone.
I'm honored and on behalf of this fantastic staff who's dedication and belief in the importance of the arts for a community, for also for a community newspaper such as the Delaware State News, they really have done the work to earn this. I haven't, but I'm really just thrilled and honored to be associated with them and a community like Dover that really is the terrific award and thank you so much for it.
Mr. Byrd, we do have some preamble that we wanted to present with these words, so bear with us. We'll have that read. I know Arshon might want to run back and get his pen and pad, so he has something to write about tomorrow. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
The Mayor's Arts Award was established to recognize the importance of the arts in Dover and to honor groups and individuals that have made outstanding contributions to the artistic and cultural life of our great city. The award honors visual and performing artists, arts educators, arts organizations, arts volunteers, and supporters of the arts. The recipients of this prestigious award exemplify excellence, inspire the community through their artistic pursuits, and ensure a cultural legacy for future generations. I'm pleased to announce this year's recipients of the Mayor's Arts Award, Delaware State News. The Delaware State News pledges to their readers to help our community become a better place to live and work through our dedication to conscientious journalism. They consistently show this support to both individual artists and the art community and greater Dover in a variety of ways. News coverage, sponsorships, participation, and by providing a platform for the community to share what's important to them in the local art scene. This is true no matter what the genre, performing visual, cinematic, or literary art. I am proud to honor Delaware State News with the Mayor's Arts Award.
Thank you very much.
I would now invite Chalet Marie Horn to the podium. Madam Clerk, would you please read the award?
Mayor's Youth Arts Awards 2015. Also recognizing the value and importance of young people's contributions to the arts, the Mayor's Youth Arts Award was established to identify, encourage, and honor talented high school art students. This award highlights the importance of an arts education in fostering future citizens of our great city. The recipients of this prestigious award exemplify excellence and demonstrate outstanding accomplishments in the arts. I am pleased to announce this year's recipients of the Arts, Mayor's Youth Arts Award. Chalet Horn. Chalet's band director, Lenny Knight, boasted about her persona, persistence, and self-discipline, which are exceptional, and how her charisma is well-accepted. She is a valuable member of the band and a well-established student in not only the band organization, but also in Dover High School. Her involvement includes playing clarinet in the marching band, wind ensemble, and pep band. She is also serving a leadership role as a junior drum major for the award-winning marching band. I am proud to honor Chalet Horn with the Mayor's Youth Arts Award.
Chalet, I'm very pleased to present you with this award, but I want to ask you a question first. D hi.
You know.
Dad, you want to get a picture? Oh, granddad, you want to get a picture? You sure? Want to say anything? You're supposed to say, "D hi, you know," when you walk away.
Thank you.
Congratulations, you're welcome.
Second Youth Arts Award recipient this evening is Claire Kolokowski, and I would invite Claire. I'm hoping I said your last name.
Claire is a musician, primarily a cellist, but also plays French horn and sings in the chorus, and is a junior at Caesar Rodney High School. Her band director, Duane Sandlin, describes her as having an enormous amount of talent and potential. She is a multi-year all-state musician on both cello and horn. She is currently a member of marching band, concert choir, and pit orchestra. I am proud to honor Claire Kolokowski with the Mayor's Youth Arts Award.
Claire, I'm very pleased to present this award to you. I will not make you say, "D hi, you know." And so we're very pleased to award this to you. Anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you very much.
Our third Mayor's Youth Arts Award recipient this evening is Angel Caldwell. Would you like to step forward to the podium?
Hi. I'm good.
Don't be nervous.
I'm not.
I'm nervous.
Madam Clerk, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Angel, Senator Newspaper Advisor, Mrs. Leslie Louder, states she is one of the few writers that she has encountered in ten years of advising the newspaper and teaching English who is willing to expand her horizons through all kinds of writing and is willing to put herself out there to touch the lives of others. Diane Cotton states her work has inspired her classmates to find their own passion in writing. Ms. Caldwell has a desire and talent to be the voice of her fellow students in the greater Dover community. I'm proud to honor Angel Caldwell with the Mayor's Youth Arts Award.
Angel, congratulations. Congratulations. Mr. Byrd, future journalist here. Do you want to sign right now? I'm pleased to present you with the award, Angel.
Thank you.
And I've got one thing to ask you before you take the stuff away. D hi.
You know.
All right.
Item two C is recognition of service for Brian Miller. I'd ask him to join Mayor Christensen at the podium. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Miller, it's a pleasure to present to you this City of Dover Cup and your family as well, because I know you've given up many hours to serve the city as chairman of the Greater Dover Arts Council. Usually behind every good volunteer that the city has, they have an understanding wife and family or a husband and family. So this is a small token of our appreciation to you, and thank you very much, and we look to volunteer you again. If you have something to say about that.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's been an honor to serve with you, our great city, and serve with two other mayors prior to you. And thank you very much for your support of the arts and continuing on with the Mayor's Arts Awards, which are very, you know, positive for our city and gives lots of opportunities for students and the community to, you know, participate in the arts. So thank you very much, and thank you very much to my family and also to all the other Greater Dover Arts Council members that I've served with. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, before I step away from the podium, I would like to ask the current members of the Greater Dover Arts Council to please stand and be recognized. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Item number three is I will entertain a motion to recess for some light refreshments and a reception for our award winners.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hosfeld, seconded by Councilman Hutchinson. There being no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand in recess.[1004.31]
Second by Councilman Hare. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're back in session. Item number four, public hearing, final reading of the proposed ordinance number 2015-13, with Planning Commission Amendment Number One, PC Number One, amending Appendix B zoning. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of August 24th, 2015. Copies are available at the entrance of the council chambers. Since this is an amendment to the zoning code, a public hearing is required. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title only, which is simply to allow the waiving of the reading. A separate motion will be necessary for its adoption. Is there a motion to...
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Neal, seconded by...
Second.
Councilman Cole. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimous. Ordinance number 2015-13 with PC Number One, amending Appendix B zoning, Article Three, District Regulation, Section Two, General Residences Zones RG One and RG Two, Article Four, Zoning, Bulk, and Parking Regulations, Section 4.2, RG One, General Residence Zones, and Article Five, Supplementary Regulations, Section One, Supplementary Regulations Applying to Residence Zones. Mrs. Townsend, would you please brief council members on this issue?
Thank you. This is an ordinance that is associated with the implementation of the Downtown Development District and the Restoring Central Dover Plan. It would allow within the RG One Zone duplex houses and townhouses as a conditional use. It would remove the allowance of apartments in the RG One Zone. It would expand the ability to do administrative waivers for things that are typical of development within that zone. And it would create infill standards for any infill lots in the downtown, or I'm sorry, citywide infill standards so that if you're building on a vacant lot in an established area, there would be a minimum amount of landscaping requirement, and sidewalks would be required, and then you would have to have the primary facade of the house face the street, so that you're not putting the side of the house on the street, or something like that. It amends the bulk standards for the general residence zones again to make it easier to develop some of the lots in the downtown. The current minimum lot size in the RG One Zone is 7,500 square feet. We, under this ordinance, it would be reduced to 6,000 square feet for a single-family detached home, which is more consistent with what's there. There are a lot of lots that are 50 by 100, or 50 by 150, and it's just very hard to develop those lots under the current zoning standards. So, it would allow flexibility in housing styles by allowing duplexes and townhouses with Planning Commission approval, and change the bulk standards, and add infill standards to the, all of the residential zones. Oh, I'm sorry, one thing. The Planning Commission added an amendment, PC Amendment Number One, and that would move the allowance of parking lots as a permitted use from the permitted uses to the conditional uses, which means that you couldn't just have off-street parking without going through a Planning Commission process.
Question from Mrs. Townsend. Councilman Hutchison?
Regarding apartments, there is no apartments allowed in this, correct?
Right. It removes the language that allows apartments in the RG One Zone. So, it says that multiple dwellings, which is another word for apartments, would be limited to placement within the RG Two District only, which is the district that most of the apartment complexes are in. For instance, the Woodmill Apartments, the Blue Hen Apartments, they're all RG Two. So, it would limit them to placement within the RG Two and not the RG One Zone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Lewis?
I do have a question. For the record, in your opinion, do you believe that this is going to bring in new building within the city?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. President, if you please direct this to Mrs. Townsend. The, what was the logic of the Planning Commission's amendment? I mean, why, I mean, I've always thought that having off-street parking was what we wanted, as opposed to the complications of on-street parking.
Off-street, the specific amendment relates to off-street parking as the principal use. So, if you look at the language that is in the ordinance as it stands today, it allowed for off-street parking accessory to commercial uses within the C Two Zone. So, this off-street parking is referring to a parking lot. And when we were working on the language, we struck the language that related to the C Two Zone, because there are other places, for instance, along Division Street, where properties are zoned C One A, but there may be the need for parking as well. As we discussed it, as we went through the process, the concern became that without having kind of the Planning Commission oversight, we wouldn't want somebody to just be able to create a parking lot without the, again, keeping in mind that this is a residential zone, and we're trying to encourage and expand homeownership. We didn't want it to be easy to create a parking lot associated with something that is not a residence without any public process. So, we put it to the conditional use, so that you could still have it, but only with the conditional use process.
Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Seeing now, I'm going to go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would care to speak in favor of the proposed amendment? In favor of the proposed amendment? Is there anyone who would care to speak against the proposed amendment? Anyone to speak against the proposed amendment? Seeing how there's no one coming forward, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of council?
If you accept staff recommendation.
Second.
Questions been made by Councilman Hare, and seconded by Councilman Neal about accept staff recommendation on the matter. Is there any further discussion?
Point of information?
Councilman Anderson.
Is the intent to have the regional staff recommendation, or the Planning Commission recommendation?
It would be preferable to have a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended with C One.
Less than ten minutes to leave it out.
Make or the motion amends the motion, or changes the motion to that language? Is that efficient?
I'll second.
And the secondor agrees to that change?
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sudler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Husfeldt?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes nine, zero. Item number five, next we have an annexation rezoning request for property located at 121 Acorn Lane and 55 Nixon Lane, owned by Paul C. Phillips and Teresa Hoschew. 55 Nixon Lane consists of .5171 plus or minus acres, and 121 Acorn Lane consists of .4609 plus or minus acres. Properties are currently zoned RS One, Single Family Residential, Kent County zoning classification. And the proposed zoning is R Eight, One Family Residential, City of Dover zoning, or classification. Mrs. Townsend, would you please brief council members on this issue?
Thank you. If you look at the map that's on the screen, you can see the site. It is two adjacent properties that back up to each other, 55 Nixon Lane and 121 Acorn Lane. By virtue of being adjacent to the Acorn Lane property, the Nixon Lane property becomes adjacent to the city. So, we're bringing it all in as one piece. The property at 121 Acorn Lane has a house on it. The property on Nixon Lane has a house that is under construction. And both properties are connected, or in the process of connecting, to city sewer. It is in a Category One, high priority annexation area. If you look, this is one of the large enclave areas in the city that is surrounded by city, but it's somewhat of a donut hole. So, we are working hard to try to fill these holes in. We did submit the plan of services to the State Planning Office, and we got their letter accepting the plan of services. There was a public hearing before the Planning Commission at their meeting in September, and there was one member of the public who spoke at that hearing, and his concern was whether the property would be able to be used commercially under the zoning classification. The answer to that question was no. It would be R Eight, which is a one-family residence zone, which is the same classification as other properties on Nixon Lane in the area, and on Acorn Lane as well. With that, there were no objections from the public, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend annexation with the requested R Eight zoning.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Any questions of Mrs. Townsend? Hearing done, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? In favor of the proposed rezoning? Is there anyone who would like to speak against the proposed rezoning? Against the proposed rezoning? Seeing how no one came forward, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Next, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of Annexation Resolution Number 2015-15.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Neal.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cole. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Sudler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Husfeldt?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries eight, one. We now have the final reading adoption of rezoning ordinance 2015-14. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of August 24th, 2015. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title only, which is simply to allow the waiving of the reading. A separate motion is necessary for its adoption. Is there a motion to allow for the reading of...
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Neal, and seconded by Councilman Cole. Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine, zero. Proposed ordinance 2015-14, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map for the City of Dover by changing the zoning designation of property located at 508 Acorn Lane from RS One, Single Family Resident, Kent County zoning classification to R Eight, One Family Resident, City of Dover zoning classification. What's the pleasure of council?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Then a motion made by Councilman Neal, and seconded by Councilman Anderson for approval and adoption of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sudler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Husfeldt?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries nine, zero. Next, we have before us Item 6B from the Safety Advisor and Transportation Committee Report, September 28th, 2015. 6B is left turn signal at State and Water Streets. Councilman Husfeldt?
Yes, sir. We heard on September 28th at the committee hearing, we heard from Mr. Koenig, who brought forth concerns from the public regarding turn signals in, I believe, the north and southbound directions on State, at the intersection of State and Water Street. During the further discussions, we opened it up to Chief Burnett to see if he had any other intersections that were of concern, and Queen and Water Street was. And for those of us that have driven that direction, we can understand that. We are asking for an endorsement letter to the Delaware Department of Transportation to study these two intersections, and as well as any other intersections that we may seem fit to do so. I would, at this point, ask Mr. Koenig if I had missed anything, or if you had anything to add, sir.
Just to add, I know the chief has sent emails to the Traffic Division at Del Dot, and I believe those emails have been recognized, and the studies are already underway. So, the letter that we'll send to just kind of memorialize the council action, if it's favorable, will simply be to study both of those intersections. The payment mark... The pavement markings are already there for dedicated left-turn lanes. This is really the modification of the signal heads if the warrants are met for such modification.
Any other questions of staff? Captain Sudler.
Yes, Chief Burnett, are there any additional comments in regards to this topic that you'd like to share with the city council?
No, I'd just like to mention that I have received in the past several complaints of those two intersections as well.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from members of council? What's the pleasure of council?
Move to endorse a letter to the State Department of Transportation in support of studying these two intersections for traffic.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Husfeld and seconded by Councilman Sudler. Any further discussion?
Just kind of bring my...
Councilman Hare.
While we're looking at the turns, has anybody brought up or looked at on State Street when you get to the Schwartz Theater, the street, whatever that, I don't know the name.
North Street.
North Street, coming to State and Governor's. We used to have signs that permitted, that prohibited left turns between a certain time of the day because you come up Governor's Avenue to make a left turn on North Street at 4:30, quarter to 5:00, you could sit there 10 minutes waiting because the traffic's coming the other direction. You can't get through it, same way going through town at that same time. If there's somebody sitting on Lockham Street at Governor's to make a left turn at 4:30, quarter to 5:00, it could take you 10 minutes to get through town. And we used to have, I know there used to be, this was years ago.
Yes.
There were signs between 4:00 and 6:00, no left turns or something. I don't know if that's something worth looking at because it gets to be a nightmare of sitting there and you just can't get around it. They're not, the lane's not wide enough. Just a thought. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilman Hare. Any further comments? Motion was made by Councilman Husfeld and seconded by Councilman Sudler to send a letter of endorsement to Delaware Department of Transportation. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. I now need a motion to accept the report of the Safety Advisory.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Anderson and seconded by Councilman Hare. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Item 9B was asked to be pulled off of the consent agenda. It's the city manager's report. Councilman Husfeld.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Koenig, I was reviewing your report and drew some interest to the area regarding vacant positions with the Public Works Department. I'm looking back on it and listing back, I'll go back to May of this year, we've been at least 16 positions down for, since that time. I think 17, maybe we're 17 down now. Can you just give us some insight of what we're, if we're having problems recruiting, filling those positions, or what's going on?
So since the beginning of this fiscal year, we've been tracking roughly 16 to 18 positions vacant through the month of August. I think there's been some progress in the month of September, if I recall correctly, but almost all these positions, except for a couple, are actually active recruitments. And our issues have varied. In some cases, we've hired people and someone has retired or left service. We've had a couple of people resign. Specifically, we've had a resignation at the water treatment plant, but we've hired several operators at the water treatment plant in the interim. We've had a couple instances where we've gone all the way through the recruitment process and the top candidate declined offers and we've had to reset and start over because we did not have additional candidates. We've had difficulty in areas like the nursery, what was previously the nursery person position, which were the two positions that tended to flower beds. Both of those positions have been vacant over the summer. They were filled earlier in the spring. One person resigned and then the second person resigned early in the summer. So there's been specific classifications that we've had difficulty recruiting. I would say every week I ask, you know, where we stand with the various recruitments. We are ready to make offers on a number of positions, but this has tracked low, you know, or rather high in the amount of openings for quite some time. It seems like as soon as we fill a position, one becomes vacant. That 17, I think, is about, there are 17 vacancies in the August report out of, I think it's 88 to 90 positions, somewhere in there. But slowly, I believe we're making progress. It's just not quick enough for my satisfaction, but it has created some challenges for us.
What, I mean, what do you think the reasons, when we're recruiting, is it, are we competing against other governments? Are we competing against better pay, better benefits? What's holding us up?
There's a couple of different challenges. For example, utility maintenance mechanics in the wastewater system, it's really specialty work. We haven't, there's not a lot of people applying for those jobs and it's a specialty. Water treatment plant, we're in the process of recently hiring water treatment plant operators. It's become much more technical than it had. And that, the criticality of that job is much higher than it was, say, one budget cycle ago because we have the demand of cow pie now. Some of the positions have gotten a little more technical over the last few years from a mechanic standpoint and a recruitment standpoint. We are competing with the private sector, obviously, for jobs. In some cases, our hiring process takes a little bit longer. We've got some, a little more stringent requirements in some cases for our recruits. And we are competing with the private sector in many areas. One of the difficulties that we have in some of our labor contracts is that the labor contract specifically says which column we can hire in that's, you know, A, B, or C in the hiring process. We can't go to F or G because we think the candidate is very, very well-qualified or has, you know, 30 years-plus experience. So we're, I want to say we're handicapped, but we're, our offers are controlled in some cases by the contracts. And what we're finding, to be honest, is especially with the younger generation coming up, the hourly rate is the only thing that matters to them. We have candidates coming in that are in their early 20s, that are still on their parents' health care, and the hourly rate is the only thing driving whether they're going to take the job or not. So we have several instances recently where we've come all the way to the end of the hiring process and we could not meet the hourly rate that they wanted. And the benefit package wasn't what was driving their decision, it was the hourly rate. So we are seeing in our hiring some challenges related to our current pay scale.
Thank you.
Captain Sudler.
Yes, city manager, Scott Koenig, just a few questions, not major, but how often are we soliciting positions available in the city of Dover? And how are we soliciting those positions?
The positions, every position is posted on city bulletin boards. It does go out to the state news and the newspapers for hiring. I think our human resources department has their own Facebook page. They do post on Facebook. We try to generate all different avenues of interest, word of mouth, all those types of things. Some jobs, we get a number of different applicants for. Other jobs, it just does not seem that there is as much interest as we would like, so...
And my final question is, in your turnover rate for any position in that area, especially in Public Works, what is the longest and what is the shortest period for your turnover rate? For your recruitment process?
You mean, once somebody leaves before we hire somebody? I would say if somebody were to leave today, it would be 10 to 12 weeks to fill that position in the shortest turnaround.
Okay, shortest.
Posting, interview, background checks. If they have existing work, we, especially as you get into professional courtesy, we would ask them to give two weeks. When you add it all up, it's probably 10 to 12 weeks on a minimum.
And your longest period that you've seen underneath management?
I would say, I know we've had difficulty filling one of our civil engineering positions that's been open for almost two years and we're, you know, we've come all the way to offering the position and lost the position to a higher offer from somebody else.
Thank you very much for answering my questions.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. Mr. Koenig, I have a different question. Has to do with going back to the customer service and electric. I've had, just to pass on, I've had some concerns about the extension period going from 10 days to three. I just wanted to pass that on to you.
Councilman Hare.
When is, when is this union contract with them? Which union is this?
A number of the Public Works positions are part of the Doe unit.
When is that contract, though?
The contract expired, current contract expired June 30th and we're hoping to bring an agreement forward here shortly for account.
So then, so technically, we don't have a contract with them?
Our contract is expired, but all the language of the contract continues.
Okay, because I can't believe that we're allowing a contract to prevent us from hiring someone that's qualified for a position.
That's not what I said. The contract says that we can hire in, so we have grade classifications and then we have steps in those classifications. The contract says you can hire at management's discretion, step A through C. So we have basically three columns, three pay, agreed-upon pay rates that we can hire at for each classification. In some cases, those pay rates have not been adequate to secure the top candidate.
And we can't go above that?
Not in accordance with the contract.
Well, that should be something I think we should look at in this contract because I think if we find someone that is very qualified and they're worth going above that, I don't think we should be tied because the union says, well, you can't hire them and pay them what they're worth.
Duly noted.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
I just have a comment.
Councilman Lewis?
You are aware by not being able to fill these positions, it's affecting services within the city, correct?
Absolutely.
What is your suggestion as our city manager?
I believe we're doing the best that we can to fill these positions and if we cannot get them filled in a timely manner where service delivery has been compromised to the point of unacceptable, we would bring forward alternatives such as hiring a contractor to assist, in some cases, potential privatization. But the hiring process is a very deliberative process. We want to make sure that we're hiring people that are good for the organization because the expectation is, once we hire a full-time employee, that they will be here for 25-plus years as part of the organization. So our hiring process is very deliberate.
Councilman Sudler.
How long have we, the city of Dover, how long have they been experienced this type of difficulty in this recruitment process? Would you say it lasts five to 10 years or even beyond that?
I would say the last couple of years have been a little bit more difficult than others. As the economy has gotten better, we have, in some cases, had more difficulty recruiting certain positions. Certain technical positions all across the organization have been more challenging to recruit than some of the average positions.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Hare.
You mentioned privatizing, and this is in Public Works, correct?
Yes, specifically, that's what we're talking about.
17, 18 employees. Have we considered the possibility of privatizing trash collection? I know it's, I know we're probably, I think, I was doing some research on my own and I think we're about the only city around that has our own trash collection. And Newark and Middletown, a lot of them privatize their trash collection.
Correct.
Saves them quite a bit of money.
I won't say that we haven't talked about it. We have not done an RFP for privatization. So in Dover, general trash collection is under the city workforce, recycling collection is privatized.
That might be something to consider where, then that could eliminate some of these 18 positions and transferring some people around.
It's possible to do that. We, one of the, one of the services that we have privatized, we've had two recent retirements of our custodial staff. Both of those positions have been privatized as those people have retired. So we're trying to do all that we can to address the service needs of the city in the most reasonable economic way. So privatization has some positive advantages in some cases, but you have to manage the contract. So there are still people and efforts required to manage those types of contracts. And ultimately, we have to make sure that we maintain the level of service. We've had, I think everybody in this room may have experienced some difficulties with our recycling contractor. There was some change in their operation and we felt the pain of that change. And it has taken some time, but the contractor, I think, has recently made some adjustments that have brought back the level of service. So we evaluate it almost every chance that we get, but it's a major, and I'll say this right up front, the consideration of privatization of trash collection. Trash collection is probably one of the premier services in Dover. We get very few complaints about it. People are very happy with it. You know, we went from it being part of the tax base to people paying $17 a month and we, we did get some complaints, but the reality of it is, is that most of our customers like the trash collection service. And getting out of trash collection is a, is a very detailed thought process that we would have to go through because there will be a transition. We have probably a million, million and a half dollars' worth of rolling stock that we have associated with the vehicles. But it is something that as budgets get tighter, as we have difficulty recruiting, those are all things that we have to consider in preparing for the next budget cycle.
I have Councilman Neal, then Councilman Husfeld, then Councilman Hare. Councilman Neal.
Scott, it would seem that the entry-level positions of the young people you're talking about are interested in an hourly rate would be entry-level. Perhaps they don't have a long-term commitment to the city anyway. Is there any chance of having an optional where that they could opt out of the benefits that those of us who are older and more experienced would appreciate and have them opt out in terms of a contract? This is what you're going to receive on an hourly basis because in the long run, if we don't have to pay for the benefits and the health care, that saves us a lot of money. And that would, I'm sure, have to reconstruct some things in terms of the hiring process. But can it be done?
Excellent idea. We have talked about it internally. The only thing I would caution you is, is that these positions are covered by a labor contract and those changes have to be negotiated. So it is not a clear path at the moment as to whether we would be able to do that. But it's something that's been discussed because the reality of it is, is that we need to be an attractive employer and that may require some, some different approaches going forward. But, you know, we're, we're a government, we don't react extremely quickly to the market, I have to say. As a tradition, governments don't act quickly to markets. So it's going to be a little bit of a challenge to convince our unions to say, well, we're going to offer a different pay scale to people who don't want our benefits.
Councilman Husfeld.
Thank you, sir. My initial concern again was, I didn't think anybody was doing anything wrong. My concern is for the employees of Public Works Department. I think after a certain amount of time, you know, I think you said, I can't remember the total, maybe 80 employees, and we're 17 down, that's significant. And I think you said... And I think you see, you start to see a lot of people doing a lot of different jobs, maybe jobs that they didn't hire on to do or they didn't, you know, come here to take part in. And those are my concerns. And just looking at for the employees and, and seeing that number continuously, I had some concerns about that and what we were doing. So I, I couldn't agree more. Our trash service and what we get, I think, is well worth it and I appreciate the employees that do that work. So those were my concerns. It was out of, out of concern for the employees and where they stood and their morale and their welfare. It was what I was concerned with.
I mean, absolutely. We're, we are actively recruiting a number of these positions and what is, what has tended to happen to this department specifically recently is, on Friday, we'll hire a new person and they're going to start Monday and they come, they start Monday and Tuesday, we'll have somebody resign to take another job. So we'll be a net zero by the end of the following week. But we have been actively recruiting these positions and we expect to be making progress on this, this gap of vacancy for the department.
Thank you. Councilman Hutchinson.
Mr. President, thank you. I just want to echo regarding the, you know, when I look at the employees throughout the city from top to bottom, we are very lucky. We have outstanding employees in one of the departments and I can't say enough good things about our trash team. The trash collection and the work that they do, no matter what people put out, they come by, they will pick it up. You ride by the capital city of the first state clean and it's well done because of the people that we have working. So I really thank each and every employee from all of them for the work they do. But again, I think that Councilman Husfeld's concern is certainly our concern regarding the utility department. We really need to focus, get those people in.
Mr. Hutchinson, I, I absolutely agree. As I said, we, we are very deliberative in the hiring process. We want to make sure that we're hiring the right people for these jobs because we have had to stand in front of council and argue for each and every one of these jobs. They're all important, from, from the MEOs all the way up to the, to the engineering positions. They're all important. They play a critical role in the delivery of services. So we are working every day to try to get these positions filled, not just in the Department of Public Works, but all across the organization. Some departments are extremely, what I would say, extremely aggressive to, to recruit positions. I mean, as soon as a position comes open, they drop everything that's going on to make sure that that position is recruited immediately. And, and a lot of those departments, in some cases, have positions that get filled very quickly because they have a lot of applicants coming in that are, that are, they're not really pre-qualified, but they're very focused on the, on the hiring process. When you have 17 openings, there is a wide range of hiring that's going on. So it's not just the Department of Public Works that's under pressure when you have 17 openings. The Human Resources Department is, is conducting 17 recruitments. The Police Department is helping us as we move through the process to do background checks. So there is a lot of effort that goes into the hiring process. Because as I said, it's important to us not just to fill it with a body, but to fill it with somebody who is going to contribute significantly to the organization.
Councilman Sutter.
Thank you. As we move forward with new strategies to recruit, I would just like for us to consider reviewing the term "all other duties necessary," which may be a contributing factor to the high turnover rate or the lack of maybe excitement in taking a job. If we can, I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying if, if that would be feasible for us to possibly consider and more narrow down to specific duties in the job description. I've heard a lot of concerns about "all other duties necessary," which has seemed to burn out a lot of the employees and from what I've heard from, from them coming, you know, to me and where they're a little disgruntled about that. So maybe we can review that, I don't know, and maybe come up with something else. I'm not too sure, but in that strategic plan, maybe something you could consider.
Mr. Sutter, I've been with the city a long time and there have been a number of days where the "all other duties" has applied to a number of things that I've done and it is, it is just a requirement for this type of organization. We, we have days where we need to drop everything that we're doing to respond to a, you know, weather event, some type of emergency. And that caveat is something that needs to remain in the job descriptions because we use it all across the organization.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I realize some people are a little frustrated by that, but the reality of it is, is that we absolutely need it at this, at this type of organization.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking to review, see if we actually need it or not. Thank you.
Any other questions, city manager? There are none. Councilman Husfeld, would you entertain a motion? Do you put forward a motion to accept the city manager's? Would so move. Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Husfeld, seconded by Councilman Neal to accept the city manager's report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number nine G is the police chief's report. Councilman Husfeld requested this be pulled off the consent agenda. Councilman Husfeld.
Thank you, sir. Chief Burnett, reviewing your report, I think it was for July and August, I was looking at your total complaints, which I see are up almost 2,000, and some of your other numbers were down and I, I'm assuming there's probably a correlation there. And I'd like you to speak to that as well as, and it really hit home, I think, earlier in the Parks and Rec meeting, you spoke about your numbers. And I think it's important for everybody to realize where you're at and what's going on with the numbers in your department as well.
Yes. The complaints, calls for service are up approximately 9%. And the main reason that is, is due to November of 2014, we switched over to a new CAD system. And that CAD system now, when an officer stops a subject, whether it's a vehicle or a person, instead of going just in a quick call, it actually switches and goes right over into CAD. So that'd be, I think to date, it was additional 3,200 calls. I'd also like to note that actual shootings in Dover where somebody was shot is up 125%. There were 18, or eight last year and 18 this year. And shots fired complaints, there were 80 last year and 127 this year, which is up 59%. As far as the, the manpower issues that we've been having, especially with all the retirements, we're authorized 101 police officers. Currently, we have seven police officers in the Delaware State Police Academy. They went in September 8th, I believe. I have two more officers that are slated to go in the March class. I have five officers that are on FTO from the March class of this year. They're just now getting ready to come off of field training. I have two officers on administrative leave and I have four officers on light duty. Out of the 101 officers that I'm allocated, that's 21 that are not full-time, ready to go for full service. So that puts me at 80. The good part is, is next week, five of the officers will be off of FTO and we hired another certified officer, so in a few more weeks after that, he'll be off FTO as well. So that gives me additional six. So that will put us up to 86. That being said, we've, we've taken two officers from the motorcycle unit starting in January and they've been supplementing the road shift, working with the, the road. What we try to do is maintain four 12-man shifts and that's probably going to lead up to your next question, which will deal with traffic tickets. Each motorcycle officer averages approximately 150 tickets a month. Times two, that's 300. Times eight, you can see that it's 2,400. That's why we're down. You know, the officers are all working very hard. These retirements really hit us hard and we're very grateful that council did let us get these 10 officers authorized and particularly the five that we did receive in March. Without them, we'd be way behind the, able. Did you have any other questions?
Do you ever think you'll reach a point where you'll be 100% staffed?
I've been here, this is my 27th year and I don't think we've ever been 100% staffed. If so, it wasn't more than two months. It's just not feasible. But I do look forward, you know, the next year, I think that we will get as close as we can to 100%.
How many retirements do we have pending?
Pending. This year so far, we've experienced six. There's an officer that is ranked number one now in another agency to leave coming up probably next month. And there's also maybe three other officers that are looking. So we, we've been hit pretty hard, but everybody stepped up to the plate and, training, we're making sure we're getting the proper training done. I have an officer, a commander, lieutenant that's out in Chicago now at Northwestern University at a command school. So I didn't even count him on the roster that I gave you, so. I know the Dover City ordinances were down as well. We received an email back in March to suspend a certain hours for the street sweeper parking and we just now resumed doing that back to it in September. So there's approximately six months where we were out and, as you know, as previous chief, a lot of ordinances are written for that particular.
Thank you, chief.
Councilman Hutchinson.
Mr. City Manager, regarding the study that's being done, do you know when that's going to be done, completed?
We have had difficulty getting the information out of the CAD system for the Police Department. And Captain Stumpf had sent some emails. I think they've, they've done a couple of test runs recently and were successful, but they're, they're still running some background scripts to make sure they're getting the right data. So the Police Department data has not been sent to the, to the consultant. The Fire Department data is at the consultant. I think their visit is scheduled for either November 3rd, 4th or November 4th, 5th. As soon as the police data is turned over and they have some time to analyze it, they're going to be scheduling the Police Department's visit. So I would expect that the study hopefully will wrap up on the consultant end sometime in, in December, early, maybe mid-December at this point.
Other questions, staff? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Sutter.
Chief Burnett, I'm sure you're, you're familiar with the district, council district areas. My question is, out of those shootings, which is 125% up, is it the fourth district that seems to have the majority of those shootings coming from that area? And if so, have we developed, are you working on developing a strategic plan for addressing those shootings separate from just, you know, investigations?
Actually, the shootings are, I would like to say it was in one particular area, but it's not. I mean, our last, we've had six murders this year and our last murder was not in the fourth district. It was at Barrister Place. So we're doing everything we can with what we have. You know, we're, we're being taxed, but our officers are getting on the scene quick. Our response rate is still good and, you know, our detectives are doing an excellent job with what we have.
How's your rapport with the community as far as in regards to them participating and giving you the information that you need to, to, you know, the, the residents' participation and helping to make their community more safer? Is it increasing? I know you did a wonderful job this, this previous Thursday or?
Yes, past Thursday.
Did a great job. Did a great job.
Yes, and that, that is a big problem, where people don't want to cooperate, whether it's for fear of retaliation or they don't want to get involved or implement themselves. But that's, that's always a concern of ours and a problem or issue, not getting full, full help from the community.
Thank you.
Other questions, staff? Very none. Councilman Husfeld, would you report a motion to accept the city, the police chief's report?
Would so move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Husfeld and seconded by Councilman Herr to accept the police chief's report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number 10, next we have the first reading of proposed ordinances. Final action by council will take place during the second reading of the ordinances on October 26, 2015. Copies of all proposed ordinances are available at the entrance of the council chambers or can be obtained from the city clerk's office. Mr. Conley, would you please brief council on ordinance number 2015-15?
Thank you, Council President Slavin. In the packet tonight is a clean copy of the first reading of a new chapter 70, section 70.2, which is generally with respect to weapons in the city of Dover. There is also a red line and blue line copy of the ordinance in the, in the packet to give everybody kind of a snapshot of what the changes were to the ordinance. But in summary, we've generally updated the definitions. A portion of this change is to comply with the most recent changes at the state level to the state code specifically related to municipal buildings. In addition, this, this update allows us to drop the, the components of the existing ordinance, which would require the police chief to issue a specific license on behalf of the city of Dover. So the updates are really related to comply with the changes to, the most recent changes to the state code and allow the city to define a number of issues related to weapons and basically refresh our ordinance with current language and I think in general, a more clear way of, of going through the ordinance as opposed to the prior layout. There is also on section, page, line 99 of the ordinance, 98 of the ordinance, it adds in penalties and fines. I'd be happy to answer any questions where the chief may be able to be more specific than I have been.
Any questions, staff? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have a few questions about this particular ordinance. One is definitions. What is, when it refers to, looking for a definition of, when it, on line 35 through 38, line 37, where it, it's unlawful for any person to purchase, sell, loan, or furnish any weapon to any person uninfluenced of any alcoholic beverage, any narcotic drug. But then it says stimulant or depressant. What, what is a, but there's no definition from stimulant. I'm just curious, is there some definition under other parts of, of city code or, or what? I mean, obviously, you know, obviously caffeine, nicotine, all that stimulants and they're, they don't influence behavior. So I'm just curious.
Mr. Anderson, if you, if you turn to the, the marked up copy, that language is in the existing ordinance, so it, it, it wasn't a change. It was, it was existing language that's been a part of the Sydney ordinance for quite some time. I couldn't answer it beyond the fact that it's been there for a standing definition.
Just has, just there's no real definition to it then. Okay. Yeah, I guess the next question I have has to do with, I'm looking at, now basically with this ordinance, beyond the record, it, it doesn't interfere with people with concealed carry who, who are properly licensed to enter a municipal building as long as it remains concealed. Is that correct?
I would defer to the chief on that.
I believe that's what it said, yes. They've already gone through the background stages and everything.
Great. And what this also does is it eliminates the burden that's of literally scores and well over 100 current applications over to the police department chief to basically do background checks that we're not really equipped to do, to exercise the constitutional right to properly store and open carry. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, what's, there is a section dealing with forfeiture, I believe in the line 73 through 77. It's, would there be, now that's, of course, applying state law, it also applies it to this particular civil action. Is, there's no time limits to that? I mean, to giving that back, it's a straight-out forfeiture if someone's guilty of the civil violation? Is that correct?
I would read it that way.
Thank you.
Do you have further questions, Councilman Anderson?
I do, but not at this time. Well, I, I won't answer them at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Sutter.
My question is for City Solicitor Rodriguez, Mr. Rodriguez. If someone was to challenge us in court in regards to the term stimulant, how would we, how would we cover ourselves or how, how would we not? Or how, how would we not get sued? Is there, do you know the defined word for stimulant in regards to this language?
We would, we would research it and try to see, you know, if there are state cases involved, since we're going to follow the, the state generally and, and go from there. And, you know, see if there was a definition that had been handed down by the courts. And if not, then probably look to other jurisdictions for a definition.
Offhand, would you, do you have an idea of how stimulant would be viewed in this language? Just not, you know, quoting you, but just a general idea due to your.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilman Neal and then Councilman Anderson.
As I understand it, this, we're just taking the state law and placing it over our law. Would it be possible for us to then draft something in terms of what a stimulant would be? Is that possible?
Question is directed to Mr. Rodriguez.
Second.
Is your question directed toward Mr. Rodriguez?
To our attorney.
Yes, we could do that and be more definite in, in actually defining, as Councilman Anderson brought up, what the definition should be. We could, we could try to do that.
That wouldn't interfere with us doing, passing this in order to comply basically with state law and matching it up with the, our city law?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. I would like to point out that, that parts of this are sort of entering a may-ish area of state law, not a mandated area of state law that we're looking at this. But I have a question about changes when it comes to the pawn shop and provision, where it talks about displays of pistols and the like. Is that a, is that a change in the law? Is that a current law?
In our ordinance?
In our ordinance.
In the markup copy, it's, it's, it's listed in black under the business display. So I think that is how the current ordinance reads.
Thank you. My copy doesn't have any markups. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, staff? At this time? If there are no further questions or proposed amendments, I will now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with section.
I would like to propose amendment.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. And I, and I would propose it, but to be, be laid with the, to be laid with the, the ordinance. But I would propose an amendment to the forfeiture section, which would be, which would be to strike line 73 through 77, subsection E, portion 2. And I really feel that's a appropriate for a civil violation, to forfeit a person's property permanently.
Had a motion to put forward an amendment at this time, or you're saying you'll bring it up in the second reading?
Like, I'd like to give it time to study.
So your motion is then what?
To propose the amendment.
Propose the amendment.
Now, I'm going to relay.
For consideration when the, upon adoption.
Exactly.
Motion's been made by Councilman Anderson to propose an amendment which would be brought forward on the evening of adoption. Is there a second to the motion? Motion fails for lack of a second. If there are no further questions or proposed amendments, I will now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with section 1-9 of the Dover Code. Mrs. McDowell, there is no action for us to take at this time. Mrs. McDowell.
Ordinance number 2015-15, amending chapter 70, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, section 70-2, weapons generally, and appendix F, fees and fines. This constitutes the first reading. Final reading is scheduled to take place on October 26, 2015.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Coney, I ask you to brief us on ordinance 2015-16.
Thank you, Council President Slavin. In layman's terms, this is our boot ordinance, and it reduces the amount of time from 120 hours currently to 24 hours, once the boot has been placed on a car for it to be towed. This is the direct result of, I believe, at least one shining example of where we booted a car that was not secured very well and sat on the street for a period of time and just created additional nuisances once it was booted. So this modification will allow the Police Department to boot the vehicle and then 24 hours later authorize the towing of it from the street.
Questions for staff? Councilman Sutter and then Anderson.
Is this a major problem that we're having in the city of Dover?
I would not call it a major problem across the city, but if you're downtown and you've got a car that's booted and is basically a nuisance sitting on the street, then it is a major headache for downtown parking areas. So I certainly support the change.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. Mr. Coney, I, I guess I'm more interested in the, in the dropping from $200 to $100. The, how much is parking in a handicap spot?
I do not know. I think the chief.
It's $100.
So that's, that's what concerns me. So potentially one ticket that you didn't pay in a few days could get you booted and towed?
Absolutely.
Concerned about that part of it. Thank you.
Other questions, staff? If there are no further questions or proposed amendments, I'll now defer to the city.
Proposed amendment, definitely.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that the reduction to $100 be, be struck and therefore returning it back to, to the, this unpaid, accumulated unpaid violation succeed more to $200.
The, the drop from 200 to 100 occurred maybe a month or two ago. So your amendment would need to change the current $100 up to, back up to 200. It's currently.
Your amendment has to raise the line, not strike the language.
Okay.
It's not a part of this.
And I would, so the, please.
Motion to amend the ordinance to place the, the threshold for fines at $200, above $200, is that correct?
That's, that's true.
More than $200 for.
It restores the language a month ago.
It doesn't restore the language, it adds new language. Because the language that's on the record right now is $200.
Right. And it's just back to where it was a month ago.
Is there a second to the motion? Lacking a second, the motion fails. Sutter.
I'd like to make amendment to approve staff's recommendation. Second.
We are not taking any.
Oh, that's right, we're not doing that.
No. Thank you.
I just want to get it over with. First read.
If there are no further questions or proposed amendments, I'll now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with sections 1-9 of the Dover Code. No action to take at this time, Mrs. McDowell.
Ordinance number 2015-16, amending chapter 106, traffic and vehicles, article 3, stopping, standing, parking, division 2, metered parking, section 106-164, violations penalties. This constitutes the first reading. The final reading is scheduled to take place on October 26, 2015.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Coney, would you please brief us on ordinance number 2015-18?
Thank you, Council President Slavin. This is the first amendment to the budget ordinances coming out of the Finance Department and the City Manager's Office for FY16. The first four pages are, are the, kind of the cumulative overview of all the, the changes for projects that were, our projects are purchased, that, projects are purchases that were in progress as of June 30, 2015. There are two small corrections that need to be made. On page one, in the upper left corner, the number of $5,635,200 is actually $5,385,600 to agree with the lower right-hand number. And on page two, the number of $14,188,500 should be $12,762,300 to agree with the bottom right-hand corner. The, this, this amendment is intended to balance or carry forward the balances for the general fund, the electric fund, and the water waste water fund related, as I said, to capital purchases and capital projects. If you look on pages five and six, labeled exhibit A, it gives you the specifics, project numbers and/or purchases that are being carried forward. And I'm just going to give you an example. At the top of the page, on page five, the, the fire SCBA equipment had not been delivered as of July, as of June 30, so that purchase had to be carried forward into FY16. The purchase order had been issued to the vendor, but the vendor had not delivered equipment by June 30. The remaining entries are really related to capital projects or other purchases that were in progress as of June 30. And this is considered, in my opinion, to be the true up of the capital plan. It is not new money coming out of various budgets. It's money that was appropriated for construction or purchases in FY15 that is moving forward to FY16. This is the first reading of this, and the second reading will occur at the next council meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? If there are no further questions or proposed amendments, I'll now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with section 1-9 of the Dover Code.
Ordinance number 2015-18, first budget amendment for fiscal year 2015-16, project carry-forward budget balances. This constitutes the first reading. The final reading is scheduled to take place on October 26, 2015.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell. Item number 11 is council members' announcements. Councilman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an announcement. I will be sponsoring a recreational event in the second district on October 31, in affiliation with Victory Christian Fellowship Church. It's going to be run from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And in lieu of Halloween, it's being called Hallelujah Night. And it's mainly for the children of the community. And we're going to be giving out lots and lots of candy. We're going to have rides for the kids there, bouncy bounces and so on. So I would like to invite the children of the community to come out again Saturday, October 31, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thank you.
Do you have the address of the church?
Ah, yes, it's on Green Hill Avenue, the old Modern Maturity. It is a recreational event, so we don't need to post it, it's for the children.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. Councilman Sutter.
I'd like to thank the Central Branch NAACP, as well as the Dover Police Department and all the city officials that came out to support last Thursday's event. It was a great event. I think we need more like that, more initiatives like that. And I just also want to wish Chief Deputy Malley speedy recovery.
Councilman Sutter. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. I definitely echo Councilman Sutter on that. And I would also like to point out that the seasons are changing. We're starting to get closer to cold weather, and that brings up an important issue, and that's the issue of homelessness in our community. And I would like to encourage everyone to take note and to, and support our homeless shelters in the community, whether it's Interfaith, Watco, Shepherd's Place, and others. They provide important activities and they can use support. Now, it's a good time to start with, with meals and, and other times that, because there are open spots right now. And for instance, that Interfaith. And I would like to encourage everyone to do their part. I'd like to thank the council president, by the way, for doing his part. And others, we do the same as well.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Other announcements from council members? I want to take a moment to thank informally, we'll have a more formal moment to thank them, but the members of the Dover Fire Department for their response this past week at the Legislative Hall of Fire, which occurred. It was an event that caused a lot of anxiety for people, but I will tell you, as somebody who was on the scene watching it unfold, we should be very proud of the service that our, our Fire Department played, as well as our Fire Chief, who took command of a very difficult situation and did a very, very good job on that. And I'm sure we'll, we'll find a moment where we can thank them more formally, but I wanted to extend my thanks to them. Any other announcements from members of council? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Moved by Councilman Hare, seconded by Councilman Neal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.